Okay, so Captain, please do roll call for us, please. Captain's talking.
Mayor McGowan.
Here.
Matthew Lund.
President.
John Glondo.
Here.
Ruston Weaver.
Here.
Stephen Harper.
President.
Mickey Holtz.
Here.
Beth Williams.
Here.
Ken Ratliff.
I'm here.
Okay. So approval of the meeting agenda. So moved.
Second.
Move second to approve the meeting agenda. It's presented, Collins in favor of I.
Aye.
Close. Okay, agenda's approved. I don't have any announcements of winning this awards and recognition to this point. We're down to the consent agenda. My mayor's fine, yes, now we just have a mention of Officer Steve. Steve. Oh, sure, I could, I would mention that maybe, maybe, I tell you what. You can have a moment of silence for Steve. Yeah. It really is unfortunate, but maybe we can. But let's. Have a minute our thoughts. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Uh, passing my son. Yes. Okay, that consent agenda. Move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Move the second to accept agenda. I.
Aye.
Close. Now, also the course, it's kind of, I have to say, it's like. Great. First of all, here from our city administrator.
Okay, thanks, Honorable Mayor, City Council. Things are running pretty smooth at City Hall. Other than a few water leaks from all of the snow, I think we've got them. Well, not only City Hall, but the Police Department had a little leak, but I think we've got it fixed a little bit there. I've been helping our. So there's a sewer plan obviously that we're doing and. The consultants needed a kind of a sewer consumption report from our billing clerk and I've been helping her with the. She did a great job on Excel and helping her with that, helping our treasurer with. Some double checking of all everybody's payroll, as you know, we switched to it once a month and and all the buttons have to be. Clicked just right to make that happen without any errors which. You know, there was some errors, so we double checked that, so I actually just kind of been busy with playing with numbers. Most of last week. And playing with snow. So I think that's all I had, not much today, thanks.
Well, I have a comment about our administrator. He's a speed demon on ten key. And a lot of stuff was handy for him and he checked out. Double right there. Obviously. Okay, thank you, Rob. Next we'll hear from our city planner, Lucy Temple.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I wanted to just let everybody know that planning is still getting. A fairly steady stream of permits, permit applications, mostly right now in form of pre-application reviews. We completed, we usually like to keep those at least a week apart, so we completed one last week and we have one tomorrow and then I'm going to schedule another. And that was all on the tails of another, so these are different things like more complicated residential development that requires updates to city right of way or commercial redevelopment of existing commercial properties. Or new development of vacant properties in the commercial district. Those permits that I've recently completed, like for the commercial storage unit over in the. In the Swiftwater Business Park and also for the Vertical Bridge Cellular Tower, those are moving on to the list for construction or pre-construction. And just into a different phase of oversight. As they work to get their building permits and we make sure that the conditions of approval of their planning permits are adhered to. And so that's basically my update for now, it's a steady stream, nothing slowing down, people are looking. Closely at the snow and wait until they can get out there and start building things. So if anybody has any question, I'd be happy to answer them.
It's weird to look on the. Let's see, um, so I, I watched the planning commission last, for the last Tuesday, I guess. And there was a long presentation from you and then primarily Greg Dorn about. Reshuffling the planning departments as well as a talk, extensive talk of a work plan for the planning committee. Hear me?
Yeah, it's just a little muffled, so I'm just leaning in, you're fine.
A work, okay, a talk of a work plan for the rest of the year for the planning commission and I'm curious, the planning commission is an advisory body to the city council. And so I'm curious why we haven't seen the work plan or approved it, but it seems already be in motion being given to them.
I think the planning commission got it about a week after I did and I am not, I'm not sure what the decision was on that. Our chair is actually on the meeting tonight, Gary Burnt, I don't know if he has anything else he could add. To that, but I, I can't answer why or the city council has what they have, I, I can't speak to that, I'm sorry.
Okay, so I'll add a few things there. One of the things that I was going to wait till Gary came up and we can.
So we can have this conversation then.
Yeah, let's have the conversation. Okay. When that and we'll be able to bring you up to date with the commission reporting, it's a little different, but as I said, I have them go through here, I'd have them on. Officer reports that goes in on the direction of planning commission taking and what we're attempting to do.
And we'll wait until.
And we have a lot to store for you.
Right.
Excellent, yes. Okay, so then next we will go to Mike Ebelhart, Public Works.
Honorable Mayor, Council, thank you so much. Obviously, I'm sure since you all live here, you experienced all the heavy, nonstop snow and fun that we had over the President's Day weekend. We put in a lot of time, a lot of hours and. To give you guys kind of a little bit of a heads up on kind of a little trinket of just this year so far, since January first. Public Works has put down thirty tons of de-icer and sand mix. Throughout the hills citywide as well as intersections and whatnot to try to help with the safety of the public. Along with that, I'm sure you all noticed that I ninety was closed for an extensive period of time, that put a heavy burden on the Police Department as well as Public Works trying to get those trucks shuffled around. Everybody likes to be right at the front of the line by Safeway and it was quite chaotic in the middle of the night for our team as well as the Police Department. Now that the snows have subsided, I'm sure you all enjoyed the wonderful warm weather, which creates even a bigger burden for us, which is the flooding that is starting. We've got a lot of residents and subcontractors and such that are piling snow around drains, which is causing havoc for us, so we're chasing. Drains, trying to get them cleaned up, so if, if anybody out there happens to. Notice that they've got a drain that they put snow on, it'd be awfully helpful if we could get those cleared off, but we're chasing them around trying to stay ahead of them. We're keeping an eye on the river as well as the city ditch or town ditch, whatever you want to call it, and town ditch is about six inches, six to eight inches away from cresting, so. We're hoping that tonight's freeze will help let that subside a little bit, but lots of challenges that we're facing. And right in the middle of all that, we had a pretty significant, significant water main leak over off of Fourth Street that the guys battled. And in the middle of all that, Roslyn, as we all know, is a little shorthanded, so we were able to lend them some assistance as well during this snow time to get their streets open back up, so. It's been a very eventful and busy few weeks for us, so. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, good. Well, comment.
Stephen has a comment.
Couple comments, one, I've, I've been getting, I'll, I'll start with the negative and with the positive. The negative is I've been getting several complaints from constituents and from contractors. We got to figure out a way between the city and the contractors and I'm not placing blame, I'm just saying, we need to figure out a way. To schedule and communicate to where, when one does their work, it doesn't get covered or, or messed up by another. You know, the example would be somebody, a contractor comes, there's that in front of a business and then the snowplow comes and covers the sidewalk again. But at the same time, like Mike's talking about, you got contractors covering drains, you have them stacking snow in the street where they're not supposed to. Somehow we need to have a meeting of the minds where everybody can play nice together. The second comment is positive. These hills have been quite traversable, I have not had to get out my four-wheel drive to go up Stafford and Oaks, I've been able to just, you know, use my regular two-wheel drive, four-wheel drive car and I very much appreciate. Great. Times of the day, all time tonight, they're reversible. Hey, and we are working on this, Stephen, Mike, it's there, but. It's, it's, we, we, we need to practice. We only have snow three points, you know, so we'll work on it, right?
I have one thing as well.
Okay.
I had somebody message in about. Education, like doing education around clearing sidewalks in front of your home, because obviously that makes, especially down in the core here, walkability really hard on Second Street and other things. I don't have any answers, but I wanted to bring that up as I had somebody message me about that and say that they were really concerned about the walkability because of sidewalks not being cleared. And I know that's honestly the city, the city's job, but how we can educate residents to try to help get that done.
Yes.
I will, Matthew, that our team has been out in force and as we see residents. We are, we are on a heavy education run right now of trying to educate the public, they've all got copies of the codes in their trucks that they're handing out to the public. Some are welcoming it with open arms and other are pretty. Negative, to say the least. But we're, we're trying to do what we can to educate them and in response to Stevens. This last year I was hoping to have time to get all of the subcontractors in one room and make sure that everyone was on the same page, so it is definitely something we're working on. I was working very closely with Corey McGuire and a few other ones, Calvin Beetle, trying to make sure that we make that happen. But unfortunately, there's some of them that they won't, and those two specific and a few others are really good about doing a good job. It's just the, the coordination of trying to get our crews and their crews simultaneous is what we're really struggling with and working on. Because I'm sure you've all been downtown and some of you may not have, and I would encourage you all that when we have a snow event. Just drive through town and then get out of the way, but look at it, it looks like a bunch of ants running around here with flashy lights and people trying to do what they can to get town opened up, so. Everybody's working hard and I appreciate all the contractors we have throughout the city that are working, we just need to, to fine tune everything a little bit.
Matthew.
Hey, Mike.
Yeah.
Is there a rhyme? What's the pattern that you guys use for following the street so that the public can know when to expect you in private place?
Those are all in our, on our city's website, basically, there's three major routes that are color coded on a map that are. On the city's website and, and we have basically both graders take off from the shop, they do First Street, shoving everything to the shoulders. Then one grader takes care of from Railroad Street to First Street, pulling everything to the centers. Along all the avenues in the business district. And then likewise, the grader that went down with him starts doing the centers all the way through the. First Street to Second Street corridor through the business district. And then they branch out from there and start in the east and work towards the west. So they start from the city shop, go to the west to Stafford, basically, they turn around and work back to the east doing centers, then they move up towards the Third Street, Fourth Street blocks and work from the east to the west. Then we have another grader that he starts off basically at the bottom of Stafford Hill and works everything to the west, the Clealum Pines, Marion Drive area, around City Park, Safeway. Then once he gets all of that area taken care of, then he heads over to the Clealum side of South Clealum. While those three graders are doing that, then we have two gentlemen in loaders that are going around, starting to do alleys. And punching open any of the areas where the graders may have, you know, closed off an intersection in it currently or whatnot, but it's a, it's a. Ballerina scene and, and the guys do a wonderful job and I'm, I'm proud of all of them, so.
Okay, thank you, Mike. So next we'll hear from our police chief, Kurt Glenn.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Council, not much to report tonight, but like, like Rob had mentioned, we, we did have a leaky roof. Hopefully that'll be addressed by the guy that re-roofed it a couple years ago, I had not had a chance to get a hold of him yet. The bid that we put in, advertised for, for the body camera solutions, that closed on February fifth, we did receive. A bid, it was opened and it will be awarded. It, it's, the mother company is GTAC and that, that's the brand of equipment that's going to fulfill our needs. So that the company is going to work with us for a final quote and hopefully that'll, that'll happen soon and we can get that. Whole process started and get a policy in place upon implementation of, of the body cameras. And. One thing I wanted to thank was Mike and his crew for their prep on the cemetery. For the funeral on Saturday, it was cleaned out very nicely. I received several compliments and it was very well appreciated by all that attended, so thank you, Mike and your crew for that. And that, that's all I have unless there's questions.
Okay. Our party chief is off tonight. We will have quite a report for you. And so now we'll hear from Gary Burnt, he's the chair of the planning commission, if you can answer some of your questions. Gary, you want to take the floor first?
I will do that, Honorable Mayor and Council, this is Gary Burnt remotely. When was the last time you folks met in person? Just curious.
One, one meeting a few months ago. Yeah, we, we had a few false starts, we had a meeting and then it changed.
October or something.
Yeah, yeah, and then we had one real early on and it could be fifty people all at it and that, that, that happened, so this may be the third in-person meeting we've had. In the last year.
Well, yeah.
So we're looking forward.
You're doing well, as, as planning commission chairs, I understand in your packet, there's a note that I provided you almost in memorandum form. From the last meeting of the city planning commission, where if you want, I will read it. But you have it and basically Lucy has corrected a couple of the pieces of that. She, as she's indicated to me, this meeting was really run by the consultant Greg Dorn, who presented. The planning commission with an outline of actions, mostly that need to be done and some may be overdue, but have some statutory requirements for twenty twenty-one. And the, the planning commission understands that, that directions for our advisory commission is, is from the city of Clealum. So we understand that and Councilmember Lund has questioned where it came from. I presume that the consultant has, has vetted the work plan that he provided. At some point to the city, I hope that that's not coming independently from, from the consultant, I doubt that it is. So we discussed that and then it was. A part of our meeting too is, as I stepped on to the planning commission, we were working on short-term rentals and when we completed that, we really did not have a work plan. For twenty twenty-one and so we were working on developing one internally to recommend. And two of the issues. That are not on the pending work plan, but are important to the commission. Would be the development of a what they call rule of conduct or a handbook for planning commissions. And Lucy has, has found some material that we can work with. The second one is it seemed to us to be very beneficial to ask the council for the opportunity to have joint sessions. Probably the best joint session we could start with would be to have a study session, I don't know how often you do that or how you schedule them. But a study session would put us, if we could do it jointly, would put us all on the same, same page, going same direction for the same goals and. No action would be taken and then we could move forward. If not, a joint session with the council would be welcomed, again, just to verify what the work plan is and to discuss the planning commission. And their goals internally for the commission for the upcoming year. And with that, I'll close and try to answer questions.
Well, I, I'm going to add something to that. And that, what, one of the things they talked about extensively at the planning discussion meeting was. The, what we call chapter fourteen. And what I would propose is that we have a study session next Monday with. The planning commission, Gary Burnt here. And Greg Dorn to review the work plan and chapter fourteen, what is involved and detailed. And the, the name of that city session would be for an hour and a half, March first. And as presentation, discussion, potential amendments to the Clealum Municipal Code. Governing the administration of the city zoning code and development regulation. And that's a lot of what Matthew was wondering, you know, what, what is this all about? And we, we, and so the best way for us to all get up to speed is to have a study session here next month. And hopefully. Six P M, hour and a half, max. If not. I would likely not be able to. Well, yeah. Be here in person, but I would be able to be. We'll have it, we'll have a hybrid meeting. That we have to do, so that was, that, I think that'll help Matthew with the questions about, you know, what, what is going on, right? And I did, well, kind of discussed chapter fourteen, what, how we're going to. Kind of work out, the important part is how is the, is governing the administration of the city zoning code, and this is really crucial. How that stuff, this includes the planning, we call that, judge, we call it Gary, Gary's examiner, all, all that stuff that we're trying to get. So that, that was a plan. The other thing that I was going to tell Gary in the planning commission is that we're going to get iPads for all the planning commissioners. So that they can do what they do. Here, I just talked to Rob about tonight, we already have a couple and we don't have to get that anymore, so we're going to do that, but are there any other questions from Gary or?
Your, your honor, I'm, I'm going to have to poll the commission to see, is that like a next Monday night, I don't have a calendar in front of me, but.
Yeah, that's next Monday.
I think our meeting is.
Well, Gary, that, you know, this would be mainly for the council, to bring them up to date. I don't know any, and really any of the, well, we have enough room to do it in person, we can certainly have them. Online to listen to what we're, we're talking about, but the kind of stud, joint study, joint council meeting you're talking about, we could have that, just like any other meeting. If you like. But this one, the study session primarily for the, for the city. Council, to get up to date on what, what the direction we're taking the planning commission. And that's, and basically you're going to be getting the same thing that they talked about, only you can ask questions yourself. And that's the goal of the meeting on.
I think that would be great.
Yeah. So Gary, does that answer your question?
If I can't capture too many of the commission available, can I work with you, your honor, to, to do the best we can? Or do you want that set in stone tonight?
Well, no, let's, let's do it tonight, let's, let's get it rolling, it's important that everybody got on the same page, and the main thing, Gary, is that we'll have Greg Dorn here and he will explain. What chapter fourteen's all about and what, and, and what the, oh, a lot of the statutory deadlines that we have to. Have the planning commission get done, that sort of thing.
So seven, six o'clock on the first?
March first.
And that's a study session of the council to discuss. The update of the code, would that be right?
Yes.
Okay, I, I'll run that to them maybe even yet tonight.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then it will be a hybrid meeting. So if you want to be here personally, the council will be here for sure and we'll see how much more room that for others.
It looks like it would be really uncomfortable to be in the middle there.
Where, where I am sitting?
No, the middle of the, the middle of the floor.
We're twelve capacity here. That's something that have a word to pass it. Yeah, but I would say the important part of this study session is for the council to get up to date on what, what, what we're doing with the planning. Were able to hear that. Okay.
Okay, can I have the follow-up? Yes, I'm here, so one of the things I'm hoping that we can have there is, one of the things I'm trying to figure out is, do we, from the plan that I saw, the planning commission document, it sounds like we're assigning. Our consultants a lot of non-reimbursed items and time, and I'm curious where the budget is for that, we, according to what. Rob and some of the last meetings, we were sixty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents over our consulting budget for planning last year. And we all, so for a total of eighty-one thousand nine fifty-nine we spent of non-reimbursed items, we only budgeted fifty-four thousand five hundred for this year. And it seems like we're giving our consultants even more work than we were last year, we're trying to figure out where the budget is for this, because it sounds like there's a. Major undertaking being taken by Greg and maybe others of non-reimbursed work and I'm curious where that money.
Well, I'll, I'll get a report from the treasurer exactly how much money we spent, but we did put money in the budget on purpose because. What's happening right now, there, a lot of Greg Dorn's work is reimbursing. But we're also using him for an invite, okay? And we have, there, we have to get ahead of the. Okay. And we have, there, we have to get ahead of the development curve. It's imperative. There are, there are gaps in our code that we need to take care of. And we're using his expertise to get that done. And I'll get you the thing about how much money we spent so far. You know, for our consultant that's non-reversible. Some of the stuff that we've used already is the issue with Sapphire Sky is up on Columbia School. Which are reimbursable. Some, some is, some isn't. And things come up like that, or we need to have somebody on, that can handle this. And then we can pass it on from there. But it's, it's imperative. It's really important at this point. And we need to have, it's, it's valuable to us to have.
I don't disagree. I guess my point is that his line item in the budget covers about a hundred and fifty-three hours of his work. It seems like we're around below through that age we already have, about the close. And so I just, what's the long, that's what I want to know, what's the long-term plan to fund that money?
Yes. Okay. Well, I'll, I'll work with you on that. Yeah. Okay, let's see now. So then, thank you, Gary.
Debbie.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see. So now we're down to citizen comments and non-agenda items. Can you, sir, Rob, can you help me with who is online that wishes to address the council at this point?
Okay, so if anybody can hear me out there in the public, this is the time that you guys could speak. Looks like Larry Schroll, are you online to speak or do you want to just listen? Listening, he, he's just listening. Okay. They can.
Well, we'll give, we'll give.
Megan Swift is on the line. I wonder if, do you want to speak or just listen?
Just listening is part of the Parks Committee.
Perfect. Yeah, that's it. That's all we have.
Okay, is that, okay. We're going to move on from citizen comments. So under public appearance, Madison, if you wouldn't mind, since we have Debbie here and she's starting to address us in person, would you mind, Madison, we listen to Debbie first?
Absolutely not. Thank you.
So now we will have a report from Debbie Bolivar from the Downtown Association. It was, it was more convenient for her to address us in person.
I'd love to give you that.
Well, I'm waiting to get the screen taken. Nice to see everybody here. Our mayor is in town. My update, I'm going to give you a little update with Bert Waldrum. Now we've been working with all seven businesses after the fire. Been a constant, not constant, been quite a good conversation with Craig Pigeon. We have a lot of, a lot of movement going on, trying to figure out whether to go for an interim period of time. He's given them a list of vacancies they're looking at right now down town. We've put up a donor site that there's, he provided over eight thousand dollars because of this evening. So they're very appreciative of this. You know, these, the businesses are all those that were really difficult to get until that went down. They're the ones that couldn't, didn't get to come back up. And they're just getting back on their feet when this happens. So it's important. There's a lot of single owner businesses in you know, emerging businesses in that building. So we're working hard with them and we're very appreciative of the donations that are coming in. And from, even if one donation is greatly appreciated, it's just love that's being shown on this building and on those businesses is very, very important for us. The other thing I did put in my report, I'm going to talk with Lucy about is we've been working with the vaccine clinics. And in doing so, one of the things that I early on urged our commissioners to do is to allow us to work with businesses to provide meals for the volunteers. So we have been able to work with almost every food provider here in Clealum that provided meals to those visitors. We have them really helpful too. This week we've had four new employees working to bring meals to all those volunteers. I think there's twenty-five to thirty meals a week that were being, my day that were being made. So we're just trying to go with the plan to help make, make them better. Um, I'm just going to give you an overview of the last couple of months. I wasn't here last week, last month. Then I wanted to remind you that our values are that we want to connect this to this place. The family-friendly, small town. Our history is important. Homegrown businesses are priorities to honor and engaging businesses and business owners is very, very important. So we continue to work on our four-point strategies. And I'm going to talk the ten of four points real quick. The promotions committee, you can see on the, the left, the specific priorities that they're, they're involved in right now. And we take a look at the outreach and social media that we've done. It's been amazing this year. We have been able to do considerable reach outside Clealum, inside, including one hundred percent. Our posts are going viral sometimes. They're not just local cities, but we're going to Yakima, Seattle, Auburn, and even further out. We just didn't look forward to that. So some of the things that we've done, but you've seen us last, was the trip to Clealum. That was very successful. We had, it wasn't an event, it was activities of how we're getting around doing some work of seeing people downtown. We've had a lot of great comments on what happened. We even had businesses engaging themselves by dressing someone up in the know or putting on the bridge around town. Helping to make it more festive. Each month we're popping, we are hosting talks, which is kind of our first weekend of the month, identifying what's going on out in our community to help bring people down. I discovered downtown Clealum, I couldn't get the link to it tonight, but this is our fall video series that we're doing on businesses downtown. We have eight of them down at quarter on our YouTube and they are getting a lot of popularity. One of the things we've done is we've joined with Russell Downtown Association, from Sedia Resort, even Ellerford Downtown Association. The Chamber is always very strong partner for us, help co-market these events out. So that's been really helpful to get, get it down, out more. Because one of the questions that one of our committees is starting to work on is, why come to Clealum? You know, seriously, why should you come to Clealum? The last, our, our downtown dollars, this is a program that I borrowed from Canvas. Excuse me, Rich Hill Downtown Association, we thought it would be fun to do and it's turned into a major program. We had a couple of people purchase these dollars. And they use them for bonuses for their employees. Some places can go around town, there's thirty-one businesses on the back of these coupons that we reversed into. And I have so many positive comments. They're walking into one place like the warrior did. Mike said, hey, they found me again. They didn't know where I'd moved to. They closed my own food store. And these guys are spending hundreds and hundreds of dollars in this store now that they know of you. I had another person say they were out of pizzas there, so they told me to come over to my place. So there's a lot of co-marketing, there's some businesses going on too. But it's been wonderful to see our local shoppers return to our local shopping area. So it's been very positive. And we've also had a significant increase in volunteers and in partners that we're working with. So we're, we're having a very good year. We're having a different year, but we're, we're learning how to do things just as well. All right, our economic community is currently working on a welcome to Clealum toolkit. We have a lot of businesses that are coming in or opening up. And we've also been working with Lucy with this too, so we appreciate the support from the city. It's a model that went actually downtown town and it's really helping new businesses succeed by offering a one-stop tool which connects them to local services, resources, provide guides for conducting businesses. Give them an opportunity to ask, answer questions like, if my building, business of committed use. You know, can I have a building, vehicles downtown? If my business historic, the building is historic. So we're working on this tool that's going to be available for new businesses and even some of our existing businesses that they want to. They can face with inventory. It's really good that we're working on this because it helped me put together a list for Craig Pigeon and his, his other businesses today that they can begin to look at. But we don't have all of them. Business is selling, a business is selling. You know, it's opening up, it's not. But we're beginning to build this vacant space of inventory downtown to get helpful. Our design committee, you know, I want to thank the, the city really a lot for coming alongside us with lodging tax funds this year for rooftop lighting and everything that we did. It was really, really appreciated. We were able to put five new buildings in lights this year, change out our remote, our higher system so we don't have to go on roofs anymore. We can do it from the ground. We've already had three buildings that want to have light on them for next year that don't have light on them. And so I have a lot of overwhelming support about this. We're having a little bit of problem with when there's bad weather, like we noticed tonight, there's a lot of lights out. I don't know why. So there's power services that are attacking our, our rooftop lights, but we did on top of that one too. Our light bulbs that we were able to decorate with the help of lodging tax plan, that went from stagnant to that month. We have just the same, we haven't ever had decorations this far out of town before. Thank you. And I said we'd go even further if we had more money. So people are feeling connected, the Christmas and the lights and the activities really brought this community together in a different way, what they need, you know, just helps to do that. We want to make sure that people understand the pocket parks are still a part of our plan. Where we are with these, these are private property. We can only do so much. And then attorneys and owners have to get into the mix and make their decisions on how much further we want to go. But we are working on hoping to get the uncaught pocket park in Glendale into some sort of use this, this summer. We'll see how that goes. We're gearing up for our adopt the basket program. We have our color spots and our baskets going. And we are going to be finding a downtown food update. We figure we can do that in some formats that's safe. Because one of our goals is that our community get on board, helping us make sure that we're brighter, cleaner, brighter downtown. And we get a lot of help from Mike and his crew, which we greatly appreciate. And I want to take a minute and say thank you, his crew, because I've seen them out there shoveling and sipping snow. And it's been really, really wonderful. I know it's hard because of our cars. And those cars are in the way when they want to try to clean that stuff up. So I've appreciated this team what they've been able to do. Our outreach committee is the one that's taking a look at why come to Clealum? Why does Clealum downtown have to offer visitors, tourists and our local shopping? And we can really answer these questions. So we can get people to stop considering driving downtown. Our retail's pretty good, but it's a lot better. So we're going to be asking those questions. What are our best assets to attract tourists and visitors? And how do we increase drive and stop and decrease drive-through? We also are taking a look at who are our champions because we know at the Downtown Association, we have to diversify our funding scheme. As more and more downtown programs come on board, our deal on tax dollars increases. So we've got more looking at that. And we're strategically looking at how we increase volunteer opportunities, including our board and our committee. So if you're interested, we could use you. Um, hold on a minute. Go ahead, one more. So that's kind of what I wanted to bring you. It's just an overview of Manhattan, Chulak, Slami. Um, welcome to stop by. We're still handing out masks and anything else you could use some help with. So, kind of welcome. So thank you. Thank you for lending me that person. I appreciate that.
Although I will, will, give you this. Keep our fingers crossed. We usually get to read that and shut down after we've done. Okay, well, thank you again, Debbie, for that. So now Madison, you still with us?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, I sound great.
Great. Thank you, honorable mayor and council. There isn't much of a comprehensive report tonight. Our paid destination marketing campaign has been paused since January fourteenth as we're still finalizing our contract. I believe it'll be talked about under unfinished business. So hopefully we'll be able to move forward here soon. But we still had over eight thousand users on discoverclealum.com in January with over seventy-five percent of these being the targeted travelers that we were able to reach in those first two weeks with our paid advertising campaign. Some other things that we were up to in January, we're highlighting our local businesses. We continue to post about history, winter recreation, the new snow parks, travel resources. I met with DMO leaders from Eastern Washington to discuss our statewide and our regional destination development strategy. I applied for several grants, including the Sea-Tac International Airport Advertising Program and just found out about an hour ago that we got it. So we're able to highlight Kidditas County to both in-state and out-of-state visitors through their advertising boards within Sea-Tac. Great to be represented there. And we've worked with the county lodging tax committee to develop micro grants for nonprofit organizations for up to a thousand dollars. Our full lodging tax process is very long and tedious. So this one's a lot simpler and we'll be releasing a press release with details on how to apply shortly. I started planning for some video interviews with Charlene, who helps manage the telephone museum and the carpenter house. Being able to go in and check out those locations and do an interview with her on how they originated and the history behind them to be able to share with travelers in a video format here in the next few weeks. I met with a few stakeholders about a potential wedding show in upper county and just looking at what this would look like. As we know that weddings have been pushed back through 2020 and through the beginning of 2021 already. And so we want to be able to have resources available as soon as we can host an in-person wedding show. And we continue to move forward with our event reporting discussions. These are picking up to be now again on a weekly basis. Where we meet on a county level with venues and event coordinators to just kind of educate them on how we're moving forward as a county and how we're moving forward as a state and, and finding consistencies within the regulations to be able to help them open up their events as soon as they can. That's all I really have to touch on tonight unless there are any questions from the council that I can answer.
Any questions, Madison? Hey, Madison. Can you include the, can you include the CPMs for the, for the paid ads for each each channel?
Absolutely. I will get that to your next report.
Thank you.
Of course. Thank you so much. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, what's CP?
Sorry, CPM is cost per mile, the cost per, the cost per thousand times being added show on the on a screen or at least loading. So that's a metric to say how much it's costing. Yep, sorry.
We're using nerd tech lingo, so thanks for translating that. All right. If there aren't any other questions, have a great night. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Madison. Appreciate it. We'll see you soon. Okay, now we'll go down to, there's no business requiring public hearings and under unfinished business, we have the 2021 Chamber of Commerce contract. Steven Harper is, can you walk us through that?
Yeah. Basically, we, we've worked with the chamber to get these to you. And as finally a leader, as we've been able to, they've been reviewed by legal. And Alex has no problems with, no problems and no edits to either of these. And so I believe in one motion, we could easily pass these two agreements. We have separated them out. These are two agreements, one for the professional services between the chamber and the city for the information center and then one for the advertisement, umbrella term for it. The idea is that that way we can kind of track them separately, do their performance separately. And we do have precedent. This is also a key to the contract. So two separate contracts reviewed by legal, flushed out by our team and back hit back and forth between us and the chamber and going. hit back and forth between us and the chamber and going, uh, there to the city's advantage. Um, and, um, in keeping with the council direction to our committee. In fact, I would recommend them in motion that we authorize the mayor to sign both of these agreements.
Second. Okay, so let's move the second to, uh, hang on. Uh, and then, uh, okay, so now we have a question.
Yeah, on the, since the, since the, we want some. Correct, because, because of the delayed nature of these, um, they are, again, they are metered out though and they are revocable within, uh, like a 90 day for the, um, within 90 day for the visitor information, within 30 day for the other. And again, they're also on a reimbursable basis. So we don't just kind of check right now for the amount. They, uh, they hand us reimbursable expenses that are within the scope of the contract and then, uh,
Yeah, I guess what I'm getting at, it's really not a lump sum agreement.
It is because it's not, yeah, it's not metered out on a monthly basis and it gives more flexibility to both parties. I don't know how to explain it is, it is a lump sum agreement because it's not a per month. It's not a per month budget.
It is, but it's, it's a maximum amount.
Correct. It's a maximum amount would be the best way to put it.
Yeah, lump sum means this is what it's going to add up to.
That's, that is correct. Yes. But we're not, just to be clear, we're not cutting a check right away. You know, we, we have, you know, we have balances.
It just seemed like a little internal conflict in the language.
Yeah, I think, I think it's in keeping with, uh, the nature of the change.
It's back.
Yeah, I saw.
Okay, other questions, uh, on the move?
I would make another comment that, uh, the chamber worked hard with the language and the city worked hard with the language and uh, none of it is accidental or coincidental, I believe. We've, um, a lot has changed and uniformity has been brought to the language of the whole, uh, contracts.
Any other questions?
Steve, are you and John comfortable with what you finally came up with?
Me and John and Matt, I believe, are comfortable. Well, I would say this personally, I'm comfortable that it meets the uh, direction that the council gave when they told us to go back and to negotiate contracts, um, in the amounts. Obviously, our, our recommendation to the council was to lower the amounts. And so with the council not taking that recommendation, I'm happy that now this reflects the direction that our committee was given. Yes. And that it's in the city's advantage, to the city's advantage. That's a good answer.
But it's not a disadvantage to the chamber.
No, no, I mean, yeah, they, I think they're happy with the language and the terms. Yeah, we're not.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, if anything, it gives them more flexibility. It's two different contracts, a little bit more administration.
Yeah.
Um, money. Yeah.
But like we, we're now assigned the intellectual property for all of.
Yeah, and then we did, in our final, yeah, our final, you know, big thing that we were really working for is that benefits both the chamber and us, um, is the, the co-licensing of the, of the work product. Is that they'll be able to use it, but that ultimately the city has it. So there's no conflict of interest with gifting of public funds. Um, and there's no conflict of interest of they own our work product. And if somebody were to try to public record, uh, request it, then they, you know, we would have bound ourselves not to be able to necessarily fulfill that. So I think we've, yeah, we've done well to the wording and, and that was, and I'll also mention that work and that wording was done at the chamber's expense. Um, not the city's. Um, they had to hire a separate lawyer that had to work on the language of that. And it was kind of an overhaul that they would have to eventually do for all their different contracts as they're considering that now. So uh, we were kind of the first ones to benefit from that, but the chamber did, you know, it was on their dime and their lawyer that, you know, they get to work out language and then, uh, obviously we reviewed it and Alex reviewed it and she's happy with it.
Any other questions? If not, all in favor of I?
I.
Opposed. Okay, the contract that the chamber has been approved.
Clarification, the contracts, or?
Contract.
Contracts.
Contract, yes. Two contracts. Okay, so, uh, we're down into new business and that, uh, ordinance, uh, 1602, mending the bu- building code and, uh, our building inspector, Robert Holmes, will walk us through that. Rob, you can hear us, okay?
Yeah, I can hear you good. Um, so I'll just, uh, shoot away here. Yeah, or basically ordinance 1602 is, uh, I'm, I'm kind of requesting to, to adopt the, uh, uh, 2018 building codes, uh, which does include the 2018, um, energy code. Uh, you probably remember it was on the, the agenda a month ago and, and then it was off. I kind of let, I kind of let this, the state agencies kind of work things out to make sure that it's actually going to be adopted and it, it went through. Uh, so most of the state, uh, is, is under this code as of February 1st. And I'm just asking that this to be adopted today and, uh, to come effect to March 1st for, so any permits that are applied for before March 1st, you know, still are the old code, but, uh, the, the, after March 1st would be the, the new code. Uh, we kind of have to have a, a, a certain date to cut, cut it off because there is some definite, um, additions to the new code. But other than that, I mean, uh, you can kind of see the red lines, what, what, what's, what's taking place and, um, I don't know if he had any questions, but I just, I, I recommend that we pass this today for, for the March 1st activation, effective date.
Yeah, Ken has a question for you.
Yeah, on the second page, um, of the ordinance, uh, we have a little thing called patio.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm, you're kind of getting muffled, Ken, but I think I, I, uh, ma- maybe you guys can hold up your mics to your, to your mouth when you're, when you're talking. May- maybe that'll, that'll help. But so the appendix, so all of my building codes have appendices and the appendices are not adopted unless you specifically adopt them. You can use them for, uh, oh, guidance for some things, uh, but they're not actually adopted. Uh, so unless you adopt it specifically. So you can see that appendix I, I think that's the one you're talking about. I left being adopted. We can use, uh, I feel like I can use patio covers. It's kind of seems odd, right? A pet, wh- why do you have a, a appendancy for that? It makes it easier for patios to be built, believe it or not. Um, so I, I wanted to leave that in there so that I could use it if I, if, if, if I needed to. It, it's a, it's a good appendancy to, to keep in there, although I did X out, you can see in red, I Xed out appendix E and H, which I felt were, um, I, I reread through them. I felt like, uh, I have plenty of accessibility books, uh, to, to go from. And I felt like maybe the sign code, you know, might be in conflict with our, uh, kind of the zoning side of the sign code. So does that answer your question, Ken?
Yeah, I think so. Um, it probably covers, uh,
Okay.
I, I'm wondering, are, are the tool shares 120 square feet or 200 is that?
Yeah, yeah, it's a bit confusing, but that's the, the word is, the words they like. So, um,
Okay.
It's 220 square feet, 200 square feet.
Right, yeah, right, okay.
Yeah.
I have a question, Rob.
I just like leave a comment. Um, I think it's important to know that this energy code is estimated to raise the cost of a house by 15, $20,000. Um, and the, the council had, uh, delayed it, the implementation until July 1st because of COVID and because of the new hardship that will place on people suffering COVID-19 and the, the governor repealed that code extension, so it's going to affect now. But, uh, it is important for people to know that this code is going to exacerbate, not help our, our housing affordability problem.
Yeah.
So what, what he's, what he's saying, what this code will actually require that for you to build a new house, you have to have like five or six, uh, carbon credits. You get a carbon credit by having the duct board, you know, inside the house, not under that. So, yeah, that, there's a whole bunch of different things, a list of various things that you add to the design. Yes, it will be expensive. One of the things that, uh, that that does is it does put the cost of building a house, especially with developers upfront, so that people don't have to pay all this energy later, later on throughout the life of the building because it will be paying for the competition. And it affects especially the, the, the.
So the question that I would have then is if we do not adopt this ordinance, is there any, um, external, um, from the state pressures or?
What's the consequences?
What's the consequences?
Next.
Good question. I do not know, but have to ask you.
Seattle is about to, they're, they're the ones.
So the, so the question is, is, why, does anybody know the penalty?
I don't think the county's passed theirs yet. I think there's some way to go, I don't know the answer.
I would move that table this until such time as other, uh, bodies.
Or hand the force.
Yeah, still are in the force. If, if people that are in mixed developing projects are considering starting them, that will be way or liberty.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's tabled. I don't think you would have to, to table it. Okay, Rob, we'll put you, we'll, we'll work with the council on it. It's fine.
Okay.
Yes?
Okay. Well, I said, yeah, I'll find out.
Yes, we'll find out. Now, let's see. Uh, okay, so now we're down to the ordinance number, uh, 1605, adopting the construction standards and, uh, our planner will do some, we'll, uh, walk us through that.
All right, um, hi, thank you again, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Now, I, it came to my attention that anyone who received only, um, an electronic packet did not, didn't get the whole packet, only got the ordinance. So I just want to make sure that everyone has a copy of the staff report.
Yes.
Everybody got it? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Um, so if some of you have just received it, let me just go over it very briefly. This 1605 ordinance is, um, formally adopting the 2002 construction standards for the city. They are very old. We do not have updated construction standards. And last year at this very meeting, this is the anniversary of this discussion. Um, the city adopted, um, ordinance 1583, doing this exact same thing. And within 60 days, the city council was supposed to have, uh, public hearing. So it's a way for the city council to, um, have kind of an emergency adoption of land use code. And, um, and so that hearing did not happen because what happened in the, in March of 2020, COVID happened. There was a lot of pausing and, um, trying to scramble to make accommodations and we did not have public meetings, um, during the 60-day period and certainly did not, um, adopt this code, uh, properly at the time. That slid off of everyone's radar. So I just happened to notice that because I was looking at something else in the code and I confirmed with the city attorney. She said, let's just run it again the same way as last year, except this year we know how to run hearings. So we'll make sure that that happens. In your staff report there, it says what the dates would be that, um, an effective hearing would need to take place, one of those four dates. Um, so that's really all this is. It's a repeat. And the reason that it's so important to adopt it right now is because we don't have this, the construction standards that were developed for the city in place. The city never adopted the 2002 construction standard. So this allows us to put it in place and then allows us to have um, more time to, uh, maybe have a discussion later in the year to start working on updated construction standards that actually, you know, meet the rules that we need to be, um, abiding by in all circumstances. So this adopts what we have already, what everyone's been operating under, no changes. And gives us time to move into the future with maybe a new set, um, once that's budgeted into the city budget. And I'd love to answer any questions you might have about this.
Um, first, first of all, let Stephen have his hand up.
I have no questions. I would move that we adopt ordinance 1605 with the following word changes, uh, a- as presented, but with the following word changes. Now there, in the, in the, now therefore clause, now therefore the city of Cleveland, Washington is your boy or day and as follows, and the rest of the verbiage of the ordinance.
Does it say? No, they're.
I'd say.
This was a quick one from our attorney.
On the first page, on the first page.
That's on 1683.
On, no, on 1605. It's actually. Uh, we're adopting 1605. And so I'm moving, and we adopt 1605, but that we declare that it's similar with San Diego, Cleveland versus Martha.
Second.
Oh, come on. Okay, it's moved to secondary to, uh, the ordinance, uh, 1605 with the Scrivener's error that the city council, the city of Cleveland, you know, does ordain.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Um, I, I, it was a little difficult to hear there for a second. I just heard the Scrivener's error about obviously adding clay on there. Was there another one after that?
No, no, 1583 has the same exact error, but we're not, it's not that question. We missed it then.
Thank you for paying attention.
Practice makes perfect.
Yes, thanks.
Uh, any other questions? If not, all in favor of I?
I.
Opposed. Hearing none, uh, 1605 is adopted.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Nobody to have their date for.
Well, is it, is it, uh, the question, uh, Lucy, is the date for the hearing? Isn't that, didn't you say?
Um, yes, I heard that from, um, Councilman Ratliff. So there's four potential dates and it, and we can schedule that through the clerk and the administrator unless you all have a preference.
No. Okay, we'll fit it in the agenda when we have lots of room.
Yeah, there you go.
All right, but we won't forget. Do you have a point?
Are you having a hard time referring us, Lucy?
Uh, yeah, it's pretty muffled. I have my volume turned all the way up, but that, I mean, it might just be my computer, but a lot of the, a lot of the words kind of drop out.
Does this make it easier?
Still seems to be muffled. If you can get it closer to your vocal cords, um, I think that's where it's picking up.
Can you hear me better now?
Maybe speak up too.
All right, moving along.
Take my mask.
There we go.
Okay, so, um, the next, I'm sorry. Okay, Rob, you want to, so, let's see, uh, the employee's handbook, uh, Rob?
Right. Yeah, it, I'll start it off and then Beth, uh, I, so I met with the employee committee. Um, um, as I, I think stated last, uh, last, uh, two weeks ago, we, we, um, I, I stated that I was updating our, our, uh, employee handbook, a little bit more extensive. And, uh, so I met with the, the committee. Uh, we had some suggestions, go back and forth. Um, but I'd like to turn it over to Beth and then, uh, Ruston could, could add in some things if he wants. He's still alive over there. Are you still there, Ruston? Oh, there you are. Okay. Okay, good. Go for it, Beth.
If you guys have your document open, um, page 16 is where it starts. Upon compensation. And basically we just have to change the day of the day of, of, of pay. And they're only paid once a month if they do their draw on the 15th or 20th of the month. They're up to half of their paycheck. And that's what the change that was made in that area. So pretty easy. It was just making it easy with the, for. So pretty basic. It was just making it easy for, for Rob to do the job. It, it's about six hours to do payroll and so that cuts out the monthly. Uh, the next page, the next one is on longevity pay. Uh, the spending breaks are heated with added, that's on the next page. And then, um, from year twenty on, we added a five percent longevity pay.
That's page seventeen.
Seventeen. And you'll see the red writing. On page eighteen, overtime and compensatory time off. It's their holidays, vacations, sick leave, and then they added jury leave, military leave, medical leave, maternity leave, and other leaves about. Are not considered hours worked for the purpose of calculating overtime. An exception to this would be if an employee were called into work on holiday. All hours worked on a recognized holiday shall be paid at a rate of one and a half times the employee's salary rate of pay in addition to the holiday pay.
Question, do, does the city have a protocol for recognizing holidays or do they just simply follow federally? Uh, is it recognized?
And we're going to continue on to benefit on page twenty. In cases where an employee is out on unpaid leave, the employee is still responsible to pay the employer the ten percent premium on their health benefits.
And if I can interrupt real quick, basically, a lot of this is what we're already doing. But our, our treasurer, because she's, wants to keep track of us all the time, she wanted it in, in writing. Um, but a lot of this stuff that's coming up, deferred comp, it's already what we're doing, but we needed it memorialized in, in writing. So just, just have that in mind. Go ahead, sorry.
That's okay. Drop it in.
Well, and, but I would like to mention the importance of that has to do with the audit. They audit and what is what you're doing and what's to be following the policy.
Uh, Department of Retirement Systems, city employees may be eligible for participating in the retirement plan offered by the Department of Retirement Systems. Employees will participate in the public employee retirement system service with a law enforcement officer and firefighters. And depending upon the position they hold. And then they already can do anything. The city employees paid to the retirement system are not based on consideration of employees' monthly wages. The statement regarding contributions to the retirement system issued by BRS, the participation in corporate retirement plans mandatory based on a rule established by BRS. Also deferred compensation basically is the plan where you can save money through the state. Invested, you can plan that you choose to, I think, not really sure. Viva, we already have, we have a health reimbursement plan that we give to our pocket material costs to the employees. The city pays into their Viva account, some of two hundred and fourteen dollars a month. And this is not considered part of your salary. Retirees Welfare Trust, the chief of police. Um, uh, why don't you explain to them what you told us about this?
Okay. So, um, as you know, Kirk is, is not only the police chief, but he's also, um, you know, an officer. And, and so, uh, he does, we, we feel like he should get some benefit that of the other officers get, uh, in which uh, this is, it's, it's called the retirees welfare trust. The other police officers get it through their union agreement. The, uh, Kirk is not part of the union, so this, uh, hundred seventy-five dollars will give, basically it's, it's an insurance policy that when he retires, then he gets the same amount of insurance that he's getting now for, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure, and Kirk's still on here, maybe a hundred or a hundred and fifty dollars a month. I mean, and, and so it's a, it's a benefit when they retire.
You know, paid for health.
Where's Kirk? Yeah, for healthcare.
Did Beth have a specific question on that?
Oh, how much was, how much was it after you retired? It, it seems like this Excel plan is.
I believe it's a hundred and seventy-five dollars a month.
Yeah, okay.
The city mechanic is the tool stipend.
I'm sorry, I can't hear Beth at all. So she's asking me a question if you could relay it.
Yeah, I, it's, uh. We're moving on.
Okay, sorry about that.
Okay. You bet.
There's a tool stipend for the city mechanic. He's always gotten a tool stipend, um, and pays for new schools. Up to a hundred dollars a month. And safety footwear, footwear, the, uh, employees get reimbursed for safety footwear up to two hundred and twenty-five dollars for, for care. And there's guidelines on what they have to buy.
And mainly. Everybody. Sorry, go ahead.
I'm all. Um, there's no limit to the maximum of the few ways to leave, however, upon separation from state employment, you will only receive twenty-five percent of a period I use typically up to two and four years. It's the same money. The buyout of sick leave is paid at the current rate of pay as an option the employee may elect to have the buyout and then place into a medical discount. My next change was in the location time, which is on page twenty-four, and starting in the eleventh year and thereafter, it will be fifteen hours.
And, and that thing, if I can interrupt, was mainly, uh, uh, we looked at what the, the union contract to kind of make all employees somewhat equal, somewhat. That's why that one's there.
So the and thereafter just means that's what it is beyond that, that's something you get every year after.
You still get that after that. You don't get any more.
Right, okay, so it just.
Yeah.
And taking review, this review is starting January first of the month. Uh, work-related injury illness, the city will know in a return on the listed insurance program through the building industry association of Washington. Remember the program, the city will pay regular wages to employees, valuable restricted from all work by their tenification because of work-related illness or injury for thirty days. During a thirty day period, the employee must report to their supervisor on a weekly basis after these thirty days, the city will provide modified. Might be rigid employee when the worker is unable to return to the regular job. So after you get paid to not work for thirty days, and then after that you need to come into light duty. And then if you cannot come into light duty, you will not get paid. Right.
And, and that's, that's a, a program that we've been in for, I don't know how long, way since I've been here and, and, and earlier. Um, and typically, uh, we get anywhere from, it started out maybe three thousand all the way up to twelve thousand dollars back uh, a year from, from being in this program. But because we're in the program, if we do have an injured worker, we have to abide by, you know, the, the, uh, program rules. Just, just a little tidbit there.
Uh, next section is page twenty-seven, holidays. We're here for part-time and temporary employees who see paid time off, who are regularly scheduled to shift, or sit late, and if they're based on how many hours they work today. And pro-rated paid time off is restricted to the holiday, the holiday, and that's the holidays. You guys can do this. And which is downward, there's one paid for the holiday, and then it's a reduced schedule shift, or six, eight.
Yeah, thanks, Beth. And, and this was really to make things, um, I tried to make things kind of fair between all employees, but sometimes you just can't, but, um, so, but we needed to clarify, uh, if a, if a guy works four tens, you know, is it, does he just get a, an eight hour floating holiday or, or what? But, um, I, I did some research, uh, on other contracts and it just seems like if you work a ten hour day, then you get ten hours of floating holiday and, and of, of, uh, regular holiday. Just, which also means if you have to take a day off, you'd have to use your ten hours of vacation. So it kind of all works out, I guess.
Next change, um, very minor, page thirty-one. Um, here is, we've got the city employee names included extensively. If you will, as necessary, so that it is the national benefit from the state investing in technology. Also see the technology acceptance, acceptability of these policies in fact, which is the, the, in addition to the contract related. Next change is way down on page fifty-seven. Down on on-call and call-out policy. Um, we removed some wording. Under purpose of on-call and call-out policy, they wrote out the public works director, city administrator, mayor, who are looking to introduce on-call and call-out arrangements in their areas to advise the state for learning implementation to ensure our policies are effective. And maybe we should use that. Um, I assume because the handbook covers that area more fully.
So, sorry, Beth, was that a question? It's.
I think you took out that section in the on-call purpose because it was not necessary to handle it.
Right. Right, it was written like we were just rolling this program out and it's already been rolled out. So that paragraph really didn't mean to, need to be there. Doesn't matter if it's there or not, but it doesn't really need to be there. And so since I was reviewing it, I took it out. The main thing was is we wanted to add that, uh, if you're on call, you've got to have a CDL. If you don't have a CDL, you know, you, you can't take the, the, the back truck out and, and whatnot. So that's the big thing. Yeah.
Yeah, we just added some, uh, references. It's fifty-five also, and things to do with seventeen to twenty-two, and that is all for the end. Any questions?
God, I thought you did a good job introducing it.
And that's all for me. Um, we have to make a motion to accept the changes in the.
Uh, it's resolution twenty-one zero zero six. Make a motion that we adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero zero six.
Second the motion.
Move to second. Twenty-one, zero zero six, and so resolution, the city found, adopting city found, the handbook effective. There's twenty-one questions on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor of I?
I.
So. Resolution twenty twenty-one. Hey, so, uh, now, uh, we're in Deep Park and Recreation Element. That's Logan's. You got all of this. Just make yourself home.
Okay.
This is, um, it was very hard to hear you during the last agenda item. I don't know if there's a way to adjust your microphone, but it's just kind of all strung together. It's muffled.
Can I have this?
Oh.
The technical crew is working.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I got it right here in my face.
Okay, I just think.
It was.
You can turn the master volume up and that'll turn everybody up.
Okay, hey, uh, do you think there's a, uh, if you turn them up too high, is that worse?
No.
What's the master one look like?
That's the red one on the right.
Can you hear Beth now?
Is she talking?
I'm talking.
Not really. There's really no change.
Testing, testing, one, two, three.
That's better.
Okay. Now I can be this.
So, um, I'm heading to construction, you know, basically the parks were getting met last week. Um, we have a lot of things that are in the, the iron that are in the fire right now. There's a lot of money that people want to give us. We've got, um, plans for that money to put in playground equipment at the city parks. And we've come up with some, what, what, the looks that we like.
Can't hold the photo? You got it, Beth? They make it close. Uh, no, you're not telling me. You'll see it up there. Well, I know it's.
Lucy, can you pull up the, the pictures?
It's because she's a.
I've got it.
I have it. Okay, great. So, um, we have about hundred thousand dollars if people want to give us a good.
How much is that?
About a hundred thousand dollars so far in, in grants that people want to give us to put in playground equipment at the city park. Um, we have plans to also put in a skate park. We're looking at designs of what we like for city park and we semi. We're thinking this would be looking structure at the top, well, actually, all of those would be a nice bit, so we're going to do. If we can get the approval of the, of the council, we're going to be seeking out more money to, to meet, and that, that setup right there costs about two hundred thousand dollars. So we've got half the money already, not even starting, and we're going to be looking for the other half through grants. Um, so, um, it's not exactly that probably, but we have to draw up the goods for that type of structure. But we also have, um, in Galloway Town, there was a part of the job that she made, is that Mrs. Becker, um, will go. And she works for a playground structure company, right?
Yeah.
And she said wherever they live, they want to donate. And she said wherever they live, they want to donate, they like to donate playground equipment to that city that they live in. And that's a picture of what their playground structures look like. And we were thinking that would go really well over time. Now that we manage that location, we've got playground structure over there, and then also if we could talk to um the city council about considering that location for the dog park now. So we have facilities there, picnic structures, playground structures, fields for the kids to play in, and a dog park for the dogs to go around in. And plenty of parking for all people that would want to be there, and less um residential areas for people driving to to get to that location. It's actually really relatively easy to get through from the freeway. From both angles, actually, so. Um, wondering what what you guys thought about those two ideas. There's also a skate park, which would be another fifty thousand dollars, basically. A splash pad that would be in the same vicinity of that other playground equipment that we showed you earlier. That would be about fifty thousand dollars to be placed up there.
And we think that we can go out and get some, um, actually, community fundraising to get that done. This was here had that fundraising.
And um Fireman's Park, we already have the money for the dog park. We can get that structure from the gal who mentioned it to Lucy. Did she mention it to you, Lucy, or she talked to somebody else, the shoemaker? Yeah, that goes, wants to donate this city park, but the playground structure.
I don't know what the beginning of your question was, couldn't hear you.
I think it was a woman who talked to.
Who did you talk to about that she wants to donate playground structure for the city?
Well, I mean, it was just a preliminary conversation. There there's no commitment by anybody to donate anything at this time. There's just um, there's somebody that we were introduced to that has moved to Clallum that owns a playground manufacturing company that may be interested in donating, but it's definitely not something that we have had any further conversations really on at this point. Um, was just kind of looking into it.
So we need city council's approval to go ahead and
Was that a question to me?
Yes.
I can't hear you.
We just need city council approval to go forward with our plan.
So where are you at? So I guess to sum it up, we're looking for the, we'd originally, what, earlier in the year, this year, presented you dog park locations. The one here, uh, right down the road, that is still an access problem, we tried to get in touch with the railroad, it's not really a feasible option at this point, obviously, the location we were looking at with the cemetery was not something the community was interested in. And then we had sort of given, I believe, direction to the Parks Committee to look at the the area behind Centennial Park. And I I understand the mayor talked to um Lucy and had said that that maybe wasn't ideal location because of this proximity to a house and also driving down into the neighborhood. So we felt like Fireman's Park was a good alternative, was actually a natural sort of boundary area back there that would be pretty perfect for having that. Um, and so we're looking at getting, I guess, the council to give us a blessing to proceed with that area instead. And also we're looking at, you know.
I would say that before, I would be comfortable doing that. I would love to have, like, maybe a quick schedule um at our at our first meeting of next month, a public hearing, that way anybody wants to chime in and say something. Um, we get some public input and if we don't, then maybe, you know, there's a question out in discussion here, but I'm sure like the public will have to say about that specific location before we go. Now, this is on the south side.
It is.
Yeah.
Yep. Not not really perplexes, but.
In the back.
Yeah, in the back, so.
The ingrained.
Yep, exactly. So behind the building, there's a sort of circular structure, circular area.
So I guess what I'm asking is if uh the mayor could publicly notice that. And have a, you know, just a basically. And we'll uh, we'll be sure that the residents over there, because that that is one of the You have to realize that you are inviting freeway traffic into a dead-end road in a small, quiet area. You have to take that into consideration. So, agree. And we, and and I, you know, I I like the suggestion, so.
Yeah.
Look there and we'll take a look at it. Yeah.
Just comment. Can you hear me? It appears that on the second street pathway, and we're eliminating parking on one side of the street. We're committed to only parking on one side and not the other.
Um, that's in relation on.
That's what I'm seeing by the. Say that, but.
Are you talking about the park plan in general? Or wait, what page? That live in this? I don't think that that's.
Page thirty-two and thirty-three.
But I don't think that really um.
It doesn't come out and say there's only parking on one side, but it looks like drive one side and the other side has pathway and parking and that sort of thing, so. Uh, but it doesn't come out and say, but there's no parking on one side of the street. If we adopt that kind of a road crossing.
Oh, but I don't, I don't think they're asking us to adopt uh all of this plan.
Oh, yeah, the the Parks Recreation Element has already been approved by council. This was more as a, as a um guide and what what the Parks Committee, because it was our sort of.
That's probably the next part of my thought.
Oh, yeah.
There's nothing to do with what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Okay.
Will that one have room for a motorhome that people pull in when the motorhome will swing around and come back out?
Which is the the Bram Street?
Yeah.
I don't know the answer to that question. Well, there was, I mean, there was a motorhome there for a while, so they have to leave a motorhome in that, but I'm not entirely sure of the.
There was a caregiver, caretaker who kept the motorhome there.
I don't mean keeping the motorhome there, I mean, pulling it in to swing around and head back out.
Right, it is, it is, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll discuss that. We'll have a public hearing on it, we can discuss that.
Well, it does say final Clallum Parks and Recreation Plan.
Yeah. The implementations of all of this. Um, yet I have to say, though, I think I'm going to say something about a slap. When you start to be doing something like that, then it becomes uh, uh, it can be a real maintenance issue. Who keeps takes care of that? And so, you know, not that this is really exactly all about that, but one of the problems that we're playground equipment and all that stuff will not require any additional uh public works that much. Time or, you know, for maintenance stuff. But a splash pad, especially if they're using uh potable water, uh, is, we have to really look at that.
Absolutely, yeah, we, I mean, we brought Mike into the conversation already to get his initial thought, so we've, we've included him in the conversations to kind of get where he saw the roadblocks, so we're definitely wanting to make sure that we're, we're addressing those concerns.
So I guess Mike is drawing up how much it would cost to maintain something like that.
Yeah, okay, okay, good. Yeah, cause, yeah, okay, good.
As part of any budget, we're going to be looking at ongoing maintenance costs.
To give you an idea about uh how we manage the swamp here, I did all the.
Yeah.
And uh, and we had, we had college kids be lifeguards, and we ran out of college lifeguards we had to give. I could keep the pumps going, but I couldn't keep track of the kids. We kept it for ten years. And so, and there'll be other discussions. So, okay, all right, so far.
Volunteer capital only goes so long.
Maybe.
Plan on Calum volunteers for.
We do have the Lions Club who was very proactive about getting a splash pad in this area. So they possibly would be a resource for maintaining.
Oh, yeah.
As much as they can.
Sustainable funding source for having that.
Really, to that matter, for that matter, it is concerned, you know, I'll say, you know, for public works. You know, they do a good job, they spend a lot of time, they mow the lawns, they keep things up and keep it clean. Uh, but they are getting taxed, and one of the things that we have to look at when it comes to the Parks Department is a funding source, that we really need to be looking at that, some sustainable funding source, so that we can budget people to really keep an eye on things, keep them up, tidied up and safe and that sort of stuff. We used to have a really cool slide. Yeah, I almost got it, I almost saw it. But they wrapped it too bad when they took our cars. All right, go ahead.
So can, so I, from what I hear, you guys are cool with us going ahead with the playground structure and getting raising funds and getting the city. But splash pad, we'll need to look at that further because of the maintenance.
Yeah.
Okay, and then as far as Fireman's Park, we will do a public hearing about that.
Do a public hearing about that, for sure, yes.
All right, so that.
Yeah, I mean, we tried to put it up where it wouldn't, where people wouldn't really care. That didn't work.
Well, I think anywhere we.
The people, the people who live up there are kind of in the ground already, wouldn't think about it.
But this is certainly an area where there's already ballfields that make a fair amount of noise, so it's not uh.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Certainly a place that's already somewhat used to noise.
Yeah, well, okay, we'll, we'll, we'll look at that.
All right.
Okay. So many reports, now we're going to go down to uh legislative procedure.
There's a whole lot to talk about for our legislative committee to continue to work through our policies and procedures handbook. We're working on chapter three at this point. Um, if you guys remember, we were um hitting on
Oh, sorry, Newcastle.
We're using Newcastle's, this policies and procedures handbook for their city council, and we're adopting it for our own. And we had worked through chapters one and two, and now we're looking on three, and the next time we need it, it's between third and fourth, which is twelve.
Now Wednesday. Wednesday.
Okay.
So let's move along.
So, yeah, it's just, we're just dragging away.
Okay, so now Parks and Recreation Committee, under committee.
Um, if you guys look at page seventeen on the Parks and Rec handbook or plan, the Parks and Recreation Plan, it shows you the evaluation that we've done on the park. Uh, city park, it showed its span and appeared the picnic area shelter, which we completed in eleven months this last year. Uh, and improved the brochure fits to opportunities, which we haven't gotten around to. Improved the skate park, that's been in the plans for a while. Shirley Sizemore had a sizable plan set up to improve the skate park and sort of funding source kind of dried up really quickly, and we haven't gotten any more movement ahead than that at all, so. The ideas are out there, Matt.
Wiggie.
Wiggie. Set up a real quick little drawing of what he sees in that kind of the space, and that's what he does for a job is set up skate parks. Um, so we're still headed in that direction to improve the skate park. Uh, enforce noise limits from private parties. Well, we've, we've increased the lighting in the area, because the, the, the Ubo has lighting now, so it's not as easy to run around in the dark and make noise and cause havoc there as it used to be. I guess that's an improvement.
So you got the first one down, right?
Yes.
Improved that shelter.
And the next is improve playground equipment, so that's what we're working on now, and that's why we brought up that that topic for the two hundred thousand dollar playground equipment, or something similar to that. And Clallum Disc Course, uh, Lucy, do you want to talk about the Clallum Disc Course?
Oh, sure.
They have a lot of conversations.
They do.
That was good.
Okay, Lucy.
Yeah, I didn't, I, I didn't hear the joke, but that's fine. Um, so the Clallum Disc Golf Course, they, we had a grant from um county lodging tax last year to use this spring for um updating and including signs. We developed uh in twenty eighteen for the Disc Golf Course. And so I'm I'm working with some volunteers who actually are regular users of the Disc Golf Course to help um, to do some like Q and A, or not Q and A, uh, QAQC, like quality assurance, quality control on the maps, on the signs, and then um the next step, as part of that grant, we can develop a logo and a Disc Golf Course brochure that, uh, and then update the the, put the new maps and everything that we already have this developed. We just need to get it on to the National Disc Golf Course Association website. And it, and it literally puts Clallum back on the map for Disc Golf, which is a niche sport that people are really into. Um, and if you ever go on the trails at Sun Catio, you'll see lots of people playing Disc Golf there as well, and they want to make, kind of go on a circuit. Um, it'll be really great um for, for the tourism, which is why we got the tourism dollars for that. So I'm hoping to see that in place um this year, and the Parks Committee um will be, will be updating you when, when that is a little bit closer. But it's fully funded to do those things.
I do see it says incorporate dog park at the dog Disc Golf.
Well, the thing is, this is a plan, how we implement it, is, you know, it's, it's sort of, okay, this is.
Uh, Fireman's Park, this um plan was made when the Fireman's Association managed the park. Uh, the city Clallum has recently taken that over for them. And um it says create barbecue pit to spend outdoor seating and organize a host community events. So um, I guess our plans for that area kind of go along with that. We just, we just have bigger, I figure, better ideas to get along with the Fireman's Park. Lightpole Park, we haven't done a whole lot of planning. We've, we've looked at that area, of things we could do, but we haven't gone forward with any kind of plans. And Memorial Park. I don't even know where this is. Where is Memorial Park?
The baseball.
That's the, okay.
Yeah, and it says incorporated dog park.
Well, there's options.
That's right. Y Park, uh, we have started working on plans for Y Park for the overall look at the place, and I think we've got like five other plans for it from the past. So that's on our agenda of working on and deliver a plan for Y Park. Uh, Parks and Rec Department, maintain department and plan and budget Parks and Rec for residents with children, that's what we're doing. And then there's general park needs and connections to regional nearby trails, and this doesn't mention all of the parks. There's actually quite a few more parks out there. The Dusy Park and.
Centennial was on there?
So actually, that might be most of them. Oh, it doesn't have Hanson Ponds, which is kind of a park area. So we are moving picnic tables and uh benches out to Hanson Ponds this spring, or the city is. City of the courts, that's kind of. Next on the agenda for Hanson Ponds, Lucy, is the bridge and the water. Dealing with the water problems.
Uh, just briefly on that, then we had a, a small planning grant that was kind of pulled off of a larger plan that was going to incorporate bridge reinstallation, but um, that is pretty far off in the future at this point. So we pulled off the small park plan, and Mike and the crew did a great job. I've heard amazing feedback on the work they did last year to um help, you know, clear uh, help deep the work being and the putting. update the parking and the, putting the gravel down and installing the bathrooms, moving some rocks around. It protected the shorelines of the pond and other things. It, it was great. So the next step for that is getting a sign kiosk out there and, um, installing the picnic tables that we have. And then, um, the, the, the bank stabilization project is a totally different thing that we can update you all on, on a, a different time, but it's not as much parks related as it is environmental resource, um, infrastructure protection. And that will have to happen before we can think about reinstalling a bridge. So it's a lot of work that has to be done before we can get to that trail reconnection.
Okay, and then the last park that's not mentioned in here is the Howard Carlin Memorial Sunset Park. And we're only mentioning this because we get a lot of feedback from the public about when it's gonna be completed.
I'll, I'll talk to the guy that's working.
I'm sorry?
I'll talk to the guy who's working on it.
Okay, you'll, you'll talk to me. We would really like to help you get that accomplished.
Oh, yeah.
If there's any way we can do that.
Oh, sure. I think we have everything in place. As soon as the weather, uh, changes, we can, uh,
So maybe, maybe people-ish, we can start working on that?
Yeah.
All right.
One thing is the football field.
The Centennial Park football field?
Needs to be fenced, because they have to pick the field before they can practice. Because everyone runs their dogs out there.
And fence it.
It's the dog park.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's our current dog park.
Yeah, we definitely want to.
It just needs a fence around it so that, uh, that can be.
You want to be careful about how you fence it, though, because you fence it and then it turns into a dog. You know, let your, let your dog loose, because, hey, you have to worry.
I think, yeah, but.
Appropriate design.
The thing is, is they go to practice and they spend their first half hour picking the field. It just isn't fair, you know? The kids want to get out there and run some energy off and everything like that.
Yeah, fencing's expensive, as we discovered.
Yeah, it's really expensive, but it's something that really needs to be done.
They make these little emitters that kind of.
Is what?
Little emitters that send out a sound that generally will put some, it might be an option.
Maybe start with signage.
Yes, the dogs can read the sound.
Well, humans also got a whiff gun, Ken. You gotta put them low.
Yeah, below the ground.
Yeah, there you go.
All right, that is, I think, is that everything I was gonna talk about?
I think so.
Okay.
So I'm gonna add to this. As you know, we have 12 acres.
Oh, that's a good question.
And we have, we have 12 acres. And part, and part of the plan, and we're still talking with other benefactors that want to contribute to this, we will be creating a Parks Plan Task Force for that. And when we look at that, we'll be looking at this whole plan with you guys. There'll be multiple people in this. And, and in some ways, it would be an umbrella plan, you know, all this stuff, we can say. But what happens up there needs, we need to think about all of this and what will happen up there. And that's gonna be, uh, you know, really, uh, community-wide project to, uh, to look at, you know, what is it? And our, our goal is to have, uh, many, uh, invitees, potential, you know, uh, you know, from the Parks and Recs, with the schools, you know, the City Council, uh, either have a whole list. And the idea is what, what is, what's best to use up there? I mean, they might think that, that maybe they will say, check what we put in there, we're gonna put the, something somewhere else. But it'll be a conversation that we'll have with the community, because there was a lot of effort to get the 12 acres there. And, uh, it'll give you some, you know, some ideas, and I do have kind of a draft. I'll, I don't, it's not even close. But I will be at the next meeting passing out, uh, kind of a draft on what the, uh, all the task force could look like, to look at what does, if we, what we do out there and what it does for all the rest of the parks and that sort of stuff needs to be considered. And so that, and that in itself is, is an important process that we have to stand. We have money for that. And I'll be giving you, uh, oh, a, a draft of that, what that task force could look like and what, uh, how we would go about. And it's, uh, you know, this, there's a lot of good ideas, a lot of stuff in here. And, uh, you know, what, if you're already doing that here, you don't need to do it there. You know, all those things have to be considered. And so you'll be here for me. Okay, go ahead.
What do we have on the survey of the land?
That's a good question. Uh, I don't have to answer that, but we'll have it soon.
So the land is not needed to us yet.
It, it's not needed to us yet. But, and, and it's there, I, I don't, I can't answer the exact reason why, but it is coming. We will be getting it. It has, what it has to do with, is that the road that the plan shows that's next to it is, is a theoretical road. And we have to have access. It has to be drawn up and needed, access to that property with some wiggle room. If the road happens or doesn't happen, the city can still get in and out of that property. And that's what they're working on. I'm surprised we haven't got it yet. It doesn't sound that hard to me, but I'll be able to report on that for me, for sure. So what happens out there affects everything you're talking about. You know, what, what, what does the community eventually want to do out there? You know, so, uh, well, th- th- this is important. The parks are real important to this city, for sure.
When will we be brought into that process that we're now gonna be operating in?
I, like I said, next, next, oh, let's say, when will we, what?
So I feel like, if, we haven't been brought into that at all as the Parks and Rec Committee, and so I'm curious, when will we be brought into that, so that we're not?
That's, that's exactly what I was telling you.
Oh.
I am creating a task force, a public process. You guys will hear about it. You'll be able to be in it. Uh, and at our next meeting, I'll have a report on what, what we plan or how we plan to go about it. You, you guys as a society, but you'll hear about it. And there's a clue, the, you know, the park people, the, you know, uh, Community Foundation, Conservation Trust, the Rotary, Eagles Downtown, Suncadia, Sun, everybody that, that can contribute or have some say. It'll be a much broader group to look at what the community wants out there. Because it's not in here. There's some things that they would like to see in here for a pool. A lot of those things, but who knows if it's gonna be a pool? I mean, sure. We don't know. I'd make the statement that we certainly would love contributions from every, everybody, but every community organization trying to shake this park.
That's my concern.
Sounds like, sounds like a democracy of every single citizen. Okay, now hang on, hang on, you guys. Hang on, you guys. First of all, this committee, what we're proposing is it will be facilitated by a park, by a recreation plan. You don't build a road by committee. So how, what they look at, how it is, it's not gonna be just sort of, I think this, it'll be facilitated by, and that's what I have. I don't have it tied down yet, but I will present that to you. Okay, it's not, it'll be, it'll be quite organized, a public process to find out what that, there's a lot of interest in that process up there. So there's, there's something in the works. I'll let you know about it in that meeting. So that's, I'm just wanting to add that. And it'll, this, this'll be looked at, to be looked at, how, well, you know, it'd be better to put this up here, or it might be better to put it there. There's, there is a whole area of option that we're having considered on city parks. And it's not even in this plan. So how we utilize this plan in conjunction with what potential we have is the point, okay? So, uh, and there's a lot of community interest in what happens there, so, I sense it.
I just have a quick question. I'm gonna do a complete 180. There's this perfectly great little park in South Cleland. I don't know what it's called, but it's over closer towards the, the Smokies. It's all fenced in. It's beautiful. It has been closed for a year with signs that say, "Closed for a Year." I realize it sits up Cleland, but, and is there any thoughts of us helping them operate that park? I mean, we're gonna, I think investing in another park is great, so there's.
That's South Cleland's park. I only think, I think the, I think the thought that's been silently contemplated and murmured is that there will come a point at which the town of South Cleland will likely not be able to continue on as a separate entity from the city of Cleland. And at that point, it would be an appropriate time to consider operating that park, I think.
Just, I, I.
It's South Cleland's park, yeah.
It is, but, but technically, Fireman's Park is also in South Cleland.
It's on the other side of the road.
Oh, okay. But that's just such a great little park.
It is.
And you drive by it and it's like, yeah.
Well, maybe, maybe it'll start to be open up. You know, I'd like to see what they.
I know they lease it out for events, probably because of COVID.
You could lease it for a dog park, which is best.
So, Mr. Ray, you closed a little bit on the last thing you said. Yeah, so leave a committee process for a reason.
And guess what? I will change that. You have a committee part, and I have some problems with committee in that, uh, I don't hear anything about it. And so the committee needs to work with the rest of the city, okay? Yes, you have a committee, and I'm, but I'm saying we're gonna change how that committee, or how parks are looked at. That's all. Just how they're looked at.
I'm not, I'm not arguing with, but I guess my question is, is generally things go through the Committee of Jurisdiction before they come to the council, but it sounds like this is gonna come directly to the council and not through the committee.
Yeah, well, this is coming from the mayor to the committee, okay? And to staff.
But.
You can decide.
In the council meeting, so it's not gonna come through committee first.
No, not, well, I can, I can show it to you for sure, but, uh, but I don't have it formatted yet. I'm just telling you ahead of time, that when I have this thing, I will give it to everybody, okay?
Okay.
There's a big picture happening. And there's a lot of other people besides the city committee that have a lot of interest in this. And we have to be sure to include them. This is, um, we're gonna create a big public process that's gonna be facilitated professionally. What is going on? What are we gonna do? What do I do? Everybody will be able to participate and say what they have to say. But it's, it's not, it's not in here. And how is this done? If you read it, there was a public process, ask people questions. All that stuff is in here. Well, there's nothing in here about that specifically that we do have now. And we have some funding for it. And the plan for how we proceed on that is really important. And what happens out there can affect what's happening here. What's happening here can affect out there. So we're adding a whole new public process, okay? And that's the plan. If you guys can hash it out, look at it, I'll have something for you, more concrete at the next meeting.
I appreciate that, but I guess, again, my question is, why haven't you engaged the committee, the Parks Committee, which would have your association over this? You said you had issues with how we're doing things, but that's the first I've heard of it.
Okay, now you're hearing about it.
Okay.
All right. And see, so, and I, I really don't want to discuss that too much right now, but that you're hearing about it now. Okay, and I appreciate it. All this stuff in here is great. Exactly what's in the plan, there's good ideas, you have people that support for that. But I'm saying we're gonna add something else to it. We're gonna, we're gonna look at it in, in, in context of a whole new process, okay? New, new process, so.
Well, it's beyond the scope of what anything looked at in this plan, because.
It wasn't, it wasn't in existence.
Yeah, so it has to be a separate thing.
It has to be separate. I would say, I don't know, direction of this, of the direction of the council, it can become a separate process, but.
We were just told it was going.
Yeah, that. I'll, I'll make a presentation to you for a process that I think will work for the community at large. A whole lot of other people are very interested in this, okay? And that's, and that's what we want, that's what we want to do. We want to create a process where that happens. And so it isn't just willy-nilly, it'd be facilitated by professional, just like the planning commission has, has someone that facilitates things for them. Same thing. You guys will be involved in it. No, I, I, I guess I can see, I can see the potential of, you have people that want to put energy into this project that don't necessarily care about the Fireman's Park, the Cleland City Park, et cetera. And so I, I, I can see the potential merits of that. I would just caution that, ultimately, the councils would steer the creation of that process. Certainly would be willing to listen to any, any input from, from the mayor or staff that have good ideas. But I mean, ultimately, we would, you know, I would, I would imagine that it would come before this council. Oh, absolutely, we'll own it up for now. Uh, it would absolutely come before the council. Um, and I'm giving you a heads up, you're hearing about it. And I have informed others about it before this. And, uh, and, and I have relayed this information to others before, you know about. So with that, any other thing on the agenda? Um, it's not on the agenda, but I do want to speak to it, because it was brought to my attention again, the House Bill 1168. I believe they're seeking, um, recommendations or letters of, uh, you know, recommendation. And because of their indefinite funding source, AKA, they don't have a clearly defined way of funding the, um, what we would probably otherwise endorse as a city. I'm just throwing it out there. I don't personally, at present, endorse House Bill 1168. And I would encourage others to inform themselves about the same. Okay, that's concerning the fire, well, fire response, forest restoration, et cetera, it all sounds good. But, uh, everything sounds good when you don't figure where the money's gonna come from. And ultimately, in the vacuum of a funding source, the legislature and high-profile figures have, uh, postulated, um, things that would seem like unconstitutional, instant tax, trying to be, you know, legis, you know, passed by a legislature. Uh, and I think there's just another House bill that would encourage that to hire. The more bills we put into action that require funding and don't have a clearly defined funding source, only give them more motivation to try to create an emergency situation. So with that, I would just caution anybody, um, who hears about the bill, that program. I don't recommend that we endorse it in the city. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for sharing that.
Yeah. Okay, any other thing else with the order?
We make the motion for a draw.
The second? What, V is the general?